I think we're all here. I'd like to call this work session to order. And what we have on our agenda today is two items. Presentation and discussion that represents the House of Hope regarding the potential future application for a new boarding house. And so let us, I'll just open the floor for that discussion and see what we have in terms of comments. This is much less formal than the actual meeting. This is a work session, so we operate informally. We want to hear people from all sides of any issue. And so I'll just open the floor to comment on it. I don't know much of the details about it myself, except there is a desire to have a second home for the, I'm starting to say home for the homeless. I'm not sure if that's the best way to describe it, but maybe that's the right word.
Mr. Chair, before we get too far along here, there is no application for any permit or process from the House of Hope.
This is an informational video.
This is merely just an informational video of some type. I know they have had discussions with the previous planning director as to that location. And I would just like to point out that a work session is not a public hearing per se, although we historically in the past allowed presenters to present their information. But as far as public input, they should be recognized by the chair, if at all. So for those that are participating as citizens, this is not a public hearing format. This is a work session for the Planning Commission to start gathering information. We may query or question people, but we're not here to supplement a debate over this issue. This is the starting process for getting information to the Planning Commission on this issue. And I believe the former director had granted them permission to come with the chair's permission to present their information at this group. So we're not making any determinations at this time, which I'm not. And I just want to see their video at this point.
And Mr. Chairman, I would like to share that people interested in the success of the House of Hope's project and people with other opinions have reached out to me. And I suggested that people with opinions one way or the other or not be present tonight because we need to learn about this project, examine its status in terms of law and regulations, and receive advice before it goes to an official hearing at an official voting meeting where public comment is done in an orderly fashion like it has been before. So I would like to say that this, I'm hoping we just all, everyone here learns more tonight and that it's not a matter of the quantity of voices with one opinion or another. And in fact, I have asked the applicants to have a minimum number of people so that we get quality information in the shortest possible period of time. And I've shared that outreach with you so that there would be a very transparent process.
So there's the video.
Could I begin? My name is Miriam Biggs, and I'm the chairman of the Board of Directors for the House of Hope. And several of our board members are here this evening. Michelle Smelser serves on our board. Tom Howitz serves on our board. Jen Avery serves on our board. And Randy Brown is our part-time executive director for the House of Hope. We're here tonight to share some information. We want, by the time this is over, we would like for you to understand what it is that we do, where it is that we do it, and the opportunity that we have to move forward. And that's why we're bringing it to you. So we're going to have three little pieces tonight. One is the video, which Jen has generated and is going to present to you. Then Randy is going to talk a little bit about what it is that we do. And we have another gal who's going to speak a little bit as a neighbor of the current House of Hope. So those are our three pieces. Not a lot of time, but we certainly appreciate your time to learn about what we do and the opportunity that we have. So Jen?
Okay. The video kind of speaks for itself. I went out and talked to some of the men, so that will be the beginning of the video. And then I go out to the current House of Hope and then the potential one. And you'll get a feel for where it's located and just take it away.
Places like this, guys like myself and guys that have other problems can never get back on their feet.
The House of Hope means to me it gives people a chance, a chance they wouldn't have if they was out on the streets.
It gives a person that wants to improve their life, it gives them the opportunity to be able to put whatever skills they have to use so that they can improve their life. If they're sitting down in the street, walking around on the street, it really limits their chances. At least here even, if you have a place to sleep, you have something to eat, you can take a shower, it gives you a much better chance. And also, it's up to the individual also. They need to put in, they need to try to put in as much as they can, as much as they have for that to happen.
Without that help, there's no telling where I would be. I would probably be out on the street, sleeping in a sleeping bag. I'd probably even be dead as cold as it's been.
I didn't have any place to go when I come here. I mean, I had no family that would take me in. And they took me in with open arms and treated me with kindness.
And I think it's something that every person should want to be, to help each other. That's what Jesus told us, help one another. That is the first rule, to help one another.
We have a great opportunity at this new home, and I want to show you the location. This is walking home from 14th Street. You see, there's two motels on either side as we walk down West 14th Street towards the home on West 15th Street. On the left, again, there's the motel. On the right, there's a swimming pool store. On the left, there's a house. That is a residential house. Now, this is the corner. You turned the corner already. Left, there's another house. So that's the second house that you would actually pass as you make your way to the 15th Street house that could possibly be the new House of Hope. Right there, there's an apartment building. And then again, there's the house. There's the back gate that you can enter. So if you count up that walk, we passed the motel, motel, a commercial store, and two houses as we rounded the corner to hit that House of Hope location. Now parking, parking will not be an issue at this property. You can see there's a very long driveway, 95 feet long. The average vehicle is 15 feet long. And there's 14 men right now, and only two have vehicles. So it's really not an issue. There's a house on your left. And now we're going to travel down West 15th Street towards Social Services or the Health Department Building, Health Services. You can see these are residential homes on 15th Street block. And then there you are, off to the right-hand side, the Health and Human Services. Now, there's a house on the right. So we've turned around, and now we're heading back towards the house. The house is on the right. The apartment buildings are straight ahead. And now instead of making that right is where we came from before, now we're going to make a left. And as you travel down, there's storage units. And then straight ahead, down that hill, it dead-ends basically at a commercial strip of several businesses. One of them is Service Title. The other is, I think, a dental office. So there's really not going to be much traffic going through there, and definitely not residential traffic. And then here is a soccer field. And again, the Health and Human Services building. Now, let's take a minute to compare the two houses. Currently, the kitchen does not have an oven. It does not have a cooktop, and it does not have a sink in it. The bedrooms now, two bunks in 11-by-11 space. And in the new house, it's normal bedrooms, really beautiful bedrooms. The bathrooms, oh my goodness. It's just a long shot, you'll see in a tour soon, of bathroom and shower stall, shower stall, sink. And that sink is actually where they do their dishes as well. It's really a difficult space. This is the office of the current location. The floors are really in rough shape. Here's a toilet that is in next to the laundry machine. Kind of a cramped spot. And then there's a toilet, two shower stalls. And then you'll see those are the linens. And then the sink is where they do their dishes also. I want to point out, when we look back this way, there is only a shower curtain that separates the toilet from the shower stalls. The walls don't go up to the ceiling, so you hear a lot of sounds. The guys are thankful for something, but boy, we had such a great opportunity of what an improvement on 15th Street. Another shot of the bedroom. And then this is the only storage closet they have. Now here's the new house. This is the front room. That would be a dining room. And this is the kitchen. It's a totally normal kitchen. Double-wall oven even, built-in microwave, dishwasher. Little mudroom, that is also where the washer and dryer could go. Pretty deck. Those doors there go to the basement. Here's a full bath on the main level. This could be the office, built-in shelving. Just kind of daydreamed that this could maybe be a quiet room, reading, games. There's a great spot. If any of them do smoke, they could be outside and not just congregating in the back in a visible spot. They could use that porch. Now upstairs, three nice sized bedrooms. Here's one, two, nice full bath, and the third bedroom. Now, this is the basement. So much amazing space. This could be a great rec room. Another room if we needed more space for ping pong. This is another washer dryer hookup space, another sink, another full bath. Utility space, storage, and then two more great storage closets. Thank you for taking these tours and taking the time.
It's a difficult day here at the House of Hope. You get up and you get ready for work, and you go to work. You come back here around about four o'clock, if that's when you get off from work. And then you start doing your chores, either do chores in the morning or chores in the evening. Go outside, clean up the front yard or backyard, clean up the bathrooms in here, make sure everything is comfortable, steady. During the Christmas season, we were overwhelmed with a lot of food, a lot of food. So my good nature, I just said, you know, I don't want this food to go to waste, so let's just give some to the neighbors. And so we shared this food with all the neighbors in the area as much as we can. Like I said, we didn't, at the end of the day, we didn't have no place to put it, but I didn't want it going bad, and I didn't want to spoil it. So I said, let me just give it away. And I'm still giving away food. Even now, we're still getting a lot of food. So it feels good to give back to people, even though I'm in a position here where people normally expect me to give, but I'm giving it away.
Thank you for your time.
All right, other comments?
Mr. Chair, I have a question on the, you're the director?
No, this is the director. I'm the chair for the chair.
Who met with the planning director? You or?
With the zoning administrator.
Yes.
I did.
Okay. What did he tell you?
He told me that the first step would be to come and share our story with you all, and the information would start here.
Okay, when you say information, did he inform you of zoning and what our restrictions are and what?
He said that, he told me what the zoning was for the house and also for across the street where the commercial stuff is. He explained that to me. And then he said if there was going to be any way that we could move here, the first step was to come to you all with information. And I think Randy has some information. He has some booklets and some things that he wants to share too.
And you're the director?
Correct.
Yes, sir. And your name is?
Randy Brown.
Randy Brown.
And this will just give you some very detailed information that you can read.
Thank you. I should pass it down. Thank you.
In an age where homelessness is a real issue throughout America, even in Warren County, we believe that the House of Hope is really an exceptional model for how to do it right. And one of our main goals is to treat men in a dignified way and in a purposeful way. We don't want them in the house just sitting around doing nothing. We're very deliberate about what we do. They do have a, we do give them a place to live. We give them food. They can do their laundry. You know, we provide for the laundry detergent, things like, most, all those expenses we try to provide for so that they can save money. The only way to get to independent living is to have, our goal is about $2,500 in their pocket within three to six months. They need that to get back on their feet. So we're very deliberate in the house. At one point, it was more, it may have felt like we had a warden making sure they follow rules. Now, when we've, we've been treating them in a dignified way, and they've responded to that in a very responsible way. By treating with dignity, then we treat them, we still have expectations. They have to go to work. They have to, we have to have a savings goal. You know, they have to follow, you know, we have a life management program that they have to walk through that is very deliberate. We have critical conversations every time we meet with them, worksheets, various things like that that are very purposeful. So we define progress and we measure progress all through their experience there. So it's very deliberate. We make, we work hard at making that happen. The worthy goals are driven not just by me, they're driven by a board. A board that is passionate, I think is, we're all, I think, equal passionate about the needs of the homeless, and we work hard at following those goals. And I just want to highlight a few things that make this such a good program. And one of them is that we have a safe environment. We've fought to try to create a safe environment for the house. We want the residents to feel safe. You know, it's not a house where a resident's going to be fearful he's going to get hurt or things like that. We are very protective of our resident, protective of, we have donors that come in and give food and give money. And my own wife, I could feel comfortable with me not even being there for her to come into that house, and she would be safe. We have, because of things that we have done there. And most of these men are just, they're good, they're, I've met everyone, I take them out for coffee the first time that they're, I've never met a man that I couldn't be a friend to me. They're just down on their luck. They're struggling, and they need somebody that'll care. So a safe environment, we do breathalyzers every night. We do drug tests randomly. Sex offenders are not allowed in the home. There's no violence, no fighting. If there was any kind of fight, they would be moved out of the house. We do not tolerate any kind of violence or treatment like that, nothing. Minor mental issues, there's some that might have minor mental health issues. Now, if they, only minor, there may be, I'm not a counselor, so I can't deal with these. If there was someone that was questionable, we would immediately move them to behavioral health where they would be monitored. And if, so they're, we're not talking about major cases of mental health. Anyone that has alcohol issues, they have to go to AN. So we're very careful. We've always kept a good reputation in the neighborhood. You could probably go to any of the neighbors. And I doubt if you'd have any of them complaining about the men and how they would, you know, how they were, if you saw the House of Hope, there's a number of homes in that neighborhood and a number of homes with kids. And none of them have, in probably the 12 years, have you ever heard of a single complaint?
We're going to hear about that.
Yeah. It's a clean environment. We seek to model proper home care and proper personal care. So they do have daily chores, like the video said, that are clearly defined. A home maintenance plan has been created where everything is defined how that chore should be done, and it's, we watch over that. They have to maintain good hygiene. These are things that are required. We make sure, for the dignity of every man. If there's four in the room and one man's smelling, that's not fair to the other three. So we really make sure there's good hygiene, and we really have a problem with that. Resourceful environment. We have a caring group that really wants to see these men thrive. And we, this life management has these strategic conversations, and I give you a number of those, several of our worksheets in your book that you can see. They see what we do. I think, there's many more, but there's some of those. And the life management is a multi-focus, based on eight value categories where they make, you know, they have to have goal commitments. And we work at trying to really learn, help them learn how to manage life on purpose. Then it's a dignified environment where men are treated as men first and homeless men second. And as we have done that without prejudice, we care for, every man is of worth. And we fight for their good. Every day that they're there, we are fighting for their good. And it doesn't matter who's in there, what man is in front of me, I believe in his good. And we try hard to treat them in a dignified way and believe that they can achieve their goals, and we work hard at making it happen. Then we want to have a homey environment, not an institutionalized environment. That's more like an, the House of Hope right now is more institutionalized. It's not a dignified place. It doesn't match our efforts. Our effort to try to treat men with dignity, that's not treating them with dignity. And this other home would do so much more for these men. They're all working hard. I think I have one man that's not working, and he's retired. So we do help those that are in disability, those that are retired, if they can save money. They got to save money. If they can't move to independent living, we're not there to just let them, you know, just stay there. We're not here to provide endless lodging for them. We want them to be moving forward to independent living. So we do help the retired and those on disability if they can save money. So we watch over that. We watch over their savings goal every month, and it has to be growing. So we need your help to continue our story. Our story is at us. We've done well to move the house to a really good place, and our next step is to move into a real dignified home. As we work together, our story can become, I believe it can become your story, Warren County's story of how homeless men are treated in a very dignified and purposeful way. They do get back out into the street. They do get back into their own independent living. They don't go back, most of them don't go back on the streets. They're, once they have their savings goal of $2,500, they're in a good place to move forward. So we just need your help to, we want to cooperate, help to create worthy solutions to the homeless needs in this community. And we want to do everything we can to be a help to you. So we're just asking for this need that we have. Do you have anything else?
I think next we would hear from Marlene, who actually has had firsthand experience living next door to the House of Hope. Marlene?
Hi. I'm Marlene Conner. I'm actually invested in, completely invested in this community. I am an eighth grade math teacher at Skyline Middle School. I run a new organization, a proper organization called Reaching Out Now. I'm on board of that. I run the Interact Club, which is the word reads for the middle school. So, and then I also run a restaurant. So, and I do sleep sometimes. So I lived next door to the House, or two doors down from the House of Hope. When I moved there, I didn't, I had no idea. And all of a sudden, my friend Kale Miguelis had said, oh, you live two doors down from the House of Hope. And I was, what is that? And I had no idea. And he told me, oh, well, it's a men's shelter and things like that. And I was like, oh, okay. It was just me and my daughter. So I was thinking, I don't know if I really, you know, I mean, of course, it's natural to think myself and my daughter are by ourselves. So I kind of just stayed in my lane, you know. I had a couple of them, we would be carrying groceries, a couple of them would come over. Ma'am, do you need help? Do you need help? You know. And then one day, I was actually pushing a refrigerator, pulling a refrigerator actually in my house by myself, and I hear on the other side outside the door, ma'am, can I help you? I said, yes, please. So he got it in my house. He put it in the house. He got it all set up, and I gave him money. And he goes, absolutely not. And that's my responsibility. And he's like, it's my responsibility as a man. And I said, I appreciate that, you know. Many times, I was sitting on my porch, they had no idea that I was sitting there, and people would try to cut through my yard. And they said, no, 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 don't cut through her yard. She actually works hard on that yard. I had nothing but good experiences with these individuals. I never heard a thing from them. Okay? So, and they are not, it isn't the best area at the moment, and it's next to a bar, you know. It's not the nicest bar in the world. I'm sure it's beautiful, but whatever. Anyways, but it's, they really do need a better place because he was talking about dignity, being dignified. They're not institutionalized. They're not in prison for anything. They didn't do anything wrong. So I feel like treating them as though, you know, with one shower curtain and things like that, that does sound to me, I worked in a prison, I taught school in a prison. So that does sound to me like it's not really showing kind of, we're not dignifying these men. We should be proud of them because they could be on the streets and doing poor things, but they've chosen to have your roles. So, so far, I think that it's good.
Thank you. In the packet of information you have, there are different pieces of the program, the goals that the men set and how they're monitored. We do, as Randy said, we do make sure that they are breathalyzer tested every day because these are men who are ready to make a commitment. And I think that is what makes this a different program than a lot of other programs. There are people who are homeless that are not interested in making a commitment. That's fine. That's not who we are. So I just wanted to make that real clear. And if you have questions for us, we're happy to answer them.
I might add to that, that they are interviewed before they come in. And in that interview, I ask questions like, when was the last time you worked? So if they tell me two years ago, that's not a good indication. That's a, you know, there's a strike against them. You know, we really want a guy that's not just playing around with homelessness and just waiting for the next opportunity just to get into another program. We want a guy that's ready to fight. And I try to pull that out of them in the interview. And so we do want to help as many as we can, but we really, that interview is very, we look at that very carefully. And part of that's to protect the neighborhood too. We don't want a guy that might cause problems. You know, so we really look at that interview time very closely.
And we're not afraid to say no. We're not afraid to say, what you want doesn't match what we have to offer. We're not afraid to do that.
Mr. Chair, I have another question. Let me get a chance, please.
I would like to know what your comfortable occupancy is for the present home and then what it would be for the new home.
The present home was at 16, we had six men in one of the rooms, which was a tiny bit larger than 11 by 11. And we felt as a board that that wasn't dignified, and we And we felt as a board that that wasn't dignified, and we would rather, even though we can't help as many, it's... Our first goal was to be a dignified home. So we went to 14. The other home could fit 16 men. We probably will maintain it at 14 because I'm the only, you know, because I'm part-time. There could be a day we might add some more, two more beds, but no more than to two.
We're not looking to grow big. We're not.
Yeah, we just want to maintain... We'll probably stay at the 14, but there would be room for 16 in that home. We do need space for group sessions. Right now, it's just a little office. It's hard to have a group session in that, the house that we're in. So this would give us another area for group sessions.
Actually, the space we're in is a garage. And I think one of the things I think of when I get discouraged is, we changed lives in a garage. What can we do in a space that could give someone a family feeling? So I think, I think we're doing good work. We just want to do it in a better way, in a better place.
Like, for example, if we moved into the new home, instead of those red lockers, we want it to look like a home. We want dressers. We want, we want them to feel they're actually in a bedroom that is a normal bedroom and not the way it looks right now. So we're trying to make some changes and move in a more dignified way.
You know, there are over 5,000 houses in Front Royal. Why this house? What's unique and special about this one?
It's a good question. About a year ago, a community benefactor came to us and said, "I want to see your program." So we took him down to the garage, and we showed him our program. And he said, "I like the work you're doing, but these men need to be out of here tomorrow. And I want to find a home for you." And we said, "Okay." So he did. And this is the house that he found. So that's the answer to your question.
Too bad he didn't check zoning prior to purchasing.
I wouldn't agree.
It would have made our life a lot easier. Thank you.
I have, I'm kind of a data-driven person, so maybe among all of you, you can come get answers. But I mean, first of all, can you tell me the history of House of Hope?
Yes. It's a grassroots organization that began in a troubled way with men that were on the street and bringing them in. I believe, I wasn't in on the early, early part of it. I think it started on Main Street. And then a group came together. I think they were at first parts of different churches. And that was, sometimes what we find, I think, is people who are driven...
What year was that?
Pardon?
What year was that?
About 12 years ago.
2008.
Eight. Yeah. It's been a while. And it was, it was difficult. These people were driven by their hearts. But then getting all the organizing done, getting the 501(c)(3), that was a lot of work. And so it was rough in the beginning. And it was difficult to find a location. And that's why they ended up in this garage.
Was it faith-based initially? Was there a religious component?
I don't think you could really say it was faith-based, but there were a number of people from churches that were interested in homelessness, and what could we do? But I don't think it was driven by any particular church.
Okay.
We still, now, with Randy's help, we've reached out to a lot of churches, and they help us with a lot of things, from, you know, financial support to paper towels and toilet paper, you know, those kinds of things.
Now, do you keep records of how many men have come through and their outcomes?
Careful records, yes.
Could you tell us how many men have gone through the program and what...
Some of that's in the pamphlet, isn't it? In the book?
It's about 53 or 58 men a year that come through the program.
Okay.
And we have some real success stories. We have one gentleman who's been with us for a while and struggled for a while, and now he's working full-time for a company that works in the schools. And he has benefits, and he's moving on. So we've had some real life-changing success stories.
Oh, I'm sure.
Which is what keeps us coming back to do this work because we don't have any funding. We have to raise every penny that we spend, and we do that as a forward.
And what is your annual budget?
Eighty-three thousand.
Yeah. And somebody has bought this house flat out.
And is willing to rent it to us at an amount of money that we can afford.
Oh, so he'll own it, and you'll just be tenants?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Oh, that's... Okay. So your budget is eighty-three thousand, 58 men a year going through the program. So that makes a total of over 12 years. That's, you mean, another 600, man?
Well, probably. But early, the early years, I don't know how many, how good the record was way back then. And it's, it has evolved over time as to how it...
Right. As you're more and more, you got better.
And something that probably is important is about three years ago, the board changed a lot to people who had had board experience, people who, for instance, Tom used to run the McKenna Center in Washington, DC. So he brings a whole lot of help in that area. And we, our board is more data-driven, really. That's when the programming came in. It started out as a shelter. It is not a shelter now. It's a program. So that was brought in by the new board.
And how do men find you? How do they come to you?
That's a good question. A lot of different ways, I think.
Yeah, they find us in various ways. They do find us at times on the Internet or Facebook. But sometimes we do get some from prison, which is...
Do they get referred by the...
They get referred. It could be a social worker.
Churches refer.
Yeah.
The guys, the guys refer guys.
Most guys come from hearing about it or finding out. They end up, yeah, sometimes they'll get thrown out by girlfriend, or they lose a job. There's various reasons why they end up homeless. And they'll hear about it, and they'll have a need. They have nowhere to go.
Do you have a sense of how many of the people you serve are Warren County, Front Royal?
We do have some statistics in there. It's a little hard...
Yeah, I couldn't find that question.
It's a little hard to know that sometimes because they may have grown up here and then left, or sometimes they are living with a grandparent for a while. So it's a little hard to say, are they Warren County residents?
I think the majority of them are.
The majority of them are. And I can get that to you with our annual reports. We can give you copies of the annual reports over the last several years so you can see, view that.
Tell us about your background, Randy.
My background, I've been in the ministry most of my life. Never, but I got my, I went to my, got my doctoral work focused on personal change for leaders, Christian leaders. And I tried to create a three-month plan for change. And out of that, Mark, after Mark Jordan, him and I have been friends somewhat. He thought that would be a good fit. And it turns out to be a good fit. I didn't know that material worked so well with homeless men. And they've responded well. I mean, they just, I found that when you treat them with dignity and talk with them in a dignified way, they respond. They always respond. It doesn't matter, I might have to change the conversation a little bit, but they, but when I do that, they buy in. You won't get all of them to buy in on an equal way, but they still buy into the conversation, and we walk through it. So I didn't know, I would, I never dreamed, working with homeless men, that wasn't part of my vision. And I believe I have been willing to step out, although I'm still an interim pastor in Middletown. I was willing to step out of my, I'm willing to step out of the ministry to focus in this because I see it such an important... I'm willing to sacrifice my, and really, it's salary, too. So I'm sacrificing, I'm 60, going to be 60 years old, and these are my important years of my life as far as income. And I'm used to a certain amount of income. And I found this is so important that I'm willing to risk my future, to invest myself in the good of these men. And it's worth, I'm willing to do that. It's worth doing.
Well, and I appreciate that. And I haven't heard from any citizens, but I'm imagining what might be some citizen concerns. And I'm thinking that you've got a very good operation now from, I mean, as far as, you know, per today. And I do know you have a good reputation because I used to use United Way Boyhood. So I heard good things about you years back. So you're doing a great job, but it kind of crucially depends on you and on the board hanging on to this plan. So to reassure citizens, what assurance can you give the citizenry of the permanence of your good management and your good system?
Well, what I have done in the past, I would, when I work with men, a lot of it was based on my research and some experience with this. And when I did the sessions, sometimes I would jot down and do doodling and explain what I'm doing. And it would all be on paper, and we would just work with it. But I felt I moved, in order to move to where even volunteers could do life man, train to do life management, what I'm doing, I had to move to worksheet type of a...
No, these are good worksheets.
And there's more. And I'm still building more. I'm just, so this is, it's becoming, the worksheets that are put together are worksheets that someone that's retired, I can show them how to do this. We're putting together a real package that when I'm gone, there's something very strong we establish.
And is there a policy voted upon by the board that, that system, that manual, I mean, is that locked in concrete?
Well, I think, yes. I think you could look at that. And I think there are people who are starting to look at our program from other places and saying, "How you do that?" And we've done that same thing to, in other places where we know that, that things have gone on that have been really amazing. How do you do that? Randy met with a fellow who was working in a program of peer, I think they were recovering alcoholics, but they were peers working, you know, people who had been through this whole thing. You know, I've been, I've been sober 12 years, and I figured it out, I think. And I want to share that with you. Kind of a little bit of an AA model, but more of a mentoring model. So I think that, I can't guarantee, I can't, but I can tell you that we, our board is strong, and we are able to attract some new energy right over there in the corner there. You know, and that's important to us because a lot of us are, you know, the age that I am. And we need, we need new, fresh people, and we're able to attract those people. So we're excited about that.
Well, new, fresh people aren't as important as keeping something that works.
Exactly.
That's where I was going with that question.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman and everyone present, I really respect what's going on here, and I'm very excited about people who appreciate opportunities. But we are the planning commission, and we have constraints in state, county, and town code. I would, at this time, ask that any local or state employees identify themselves and what capacity they're here tonight. And I would like to hear from town staff, planning and zoning, information about the pertinent regulations that apply to this situation. Because we need it on record.
Actually, as I stated earlier, there is no application yet. This is just the beginning of the information process.
We have done any research on it, other than preliminary of the actual zoning of the location with providing the, based off of the prior director, and it's Chris Brock, interim director, since it's on recording.
And first, I would like to say, the House of Hope is not under the microscope here.
No.
What their use is. I think the House of Hope does a great job. You have to understand that zoning laws are created by the town council to support our comprehensive plan. And where this particular house is located is not an area where council initially wanted to see a rooming house, which is what this is, a boarding house. They are historically located in commercial zones by special use only. It's not a by right in any zone that I know of. I'm sure Jeremy explained that to you when he talked to you. I think it's great that this person is giving you the property. And again, they should have checked the zoning prior to this because not only do we try to look at zoning issues from an applicant's viewpoint, but we're also tasked with protecting communities, neighborhoods, and individuals adjacent to this property. So with Dr. Davis's comments, I would recommend that staff, or we direct staff for our next planning commission meeting or work session, to have a report on this particular property. Because what I'm concerned of, I don't have the map. I can see it in my head. But if it requires a rezoning, it will probably also require a comprehensive plan amendment. And that may be impossible because it may be what they call spot zoning, which is changing the zoning of a particular parcel of land that is not harmonious with the adjacent properties. I.e., if you have a piece of property zoned R3, and it's a Jane, or, excuse me, an R1 piece adjacent to an R3, they are both residential, and some rezoning is permitted. But to go from a residential zone to a commercial zone when you're still surrounded by a residential zone is spot zoning, and that's heavily frowned upon. So I would direct the chairman to direct staff to give us a full report on this parcel and what the options are on that and be available for the next work session.
Yeah, because my question's a hanging chat on purpose, you know? But I also wanted to record who was here with us. And I would also like to request that town legal counsel review our current situation as it would pertain to a proposed use of the house, since nothing official has been submitted. And I did not infer that in my comments. I did not say this application, I don't think, maybe I did without realizing it, but that we don't have an application. But I would like to know pertinent legal questions and answers identified by staff, by a careful review of staff of the code, and by our legal counsel for the town, and what options there are to make this happen if it was submitted and looked on favorably.
And I might add to that, Mr. Chair, that, you know, again, we still may not have an application to take any action on. I don't want to see the planning commission get in the habit of every time somebody questions something, that we have a level-three investigation. I think just letting us know what the zoning is on this piece, what the options are as far as putting it there, what it would take, and then we can convey that information to the parties affected. Because, you know, an important part of this process is the public hearing where we hear from the neighbors. And that won't happen tonight until we duly advertise a public hearing for that. So everybody gets their say, as well as supporters and non-supporters of this project. So I would move to do that for our next episode, which could be the 19th.
Yeah, and I don't think it, we need formal motions at this meeting.
No, no, no. Just direct the chair to head that direction.
Yeah.
And again, I do want to thank you for your presentation. It was a wonderful presentation, and I thank a lot of people. Really appreciate what the House of Hope does in this community.
May I ask a question just to clarify? Would it, is it appropriate to do an application? I wasn't, I didn't think it was because I wasn't sure what we would be applying for.
Well, first, we need to, normally, an applicant comes in, and they know what they want to do. They know the ordinance. They've talked with the planning director. Now, we're giving everybody a little leeway here because, you know, the director is no longer here. So we're in an interim period. And we'll investigate as to what options exist and give that information to you. And we'll investigate as to what options exist and give that information to you, and then you can decide, you know, but, but we can't make any decisions until we get a formal application. We can't tell you, yeah, we're, we're going to vote in favor of it until we get an application. Because we still have a lot of questions. As you noticed, the members were querying you on that, and I'm glad they have this packet. They can digest it, obviously, and we can be more informed once we find out the zoning, because the zoning drives us, the comprehensive plan. Once we see that comprehensive plan, how it relates to this, then, but to be honest with you, you may want to look for another spot. Because it's, you know, it's difficult to get these boarding homes. There's a reason council doesn't want boarding homes located within residential zones. I know this is on the fringe, and there may be some options there, but...
Well, we have no, we have no other option.
Yeah, this, he's gonna, he would probably back away and, he's indicating...
He's already, he's already done it. He's done it.
He's done after this, but...
Yeah.
But we appreciate you helping us understand it and anything that you can do to help us figure out what we need to do.
Well, that's what, that's what we try to do here. You know, we're community-based and we like to see our community certainly, you know, help our citizens, but we do have limitations.
Yeah, I think all voices need to be heard, but the work session is here for us to understand our boundaries and the options for using that.
And I know, I certainly have gotten a lot of information tonight that, that we can now request staff to give us some information to fill in the gaps and, and we can figure out a way to go forward.
So would it be, would it be real to think that, that your next meeting would be discussed?
Yes. Well, we're going to direct staff. We hope they can get us that information by that time.
Okay. And that's, do you have a date for that meeting?
What's that?
Is there a date set for that meeting?
The, we, the March...
Third Wednesday in March.
Third Wednesday and March, what's the 19th, maybe?
And would we have to have an application prior to that? Or do, or do we still wait?
Not if we discuss it at a work session.
Yeah. I think the thing to do is to plan another work session where staff, after they have more than like three days to get all the information together, is fully prepared, engaged, and advised on parameters, because I think this is...
That would be the 18th, I would imagine, or March.
Yeah, and I think the place where you have a leeway to talk about concerns and identify constraints is a work session.
And then, as Dr. Davis points out, then that gives us a way to prepare a package, if you do an application, that we can have for the public so they can have the correct information. There's nothing worse than having incomplete information. And we're not ready to have public input yet because we don't have enough data.
And all voices will be heard, and they're all important. But it's also important not to put the cart before the horse. If we don't understand the rules we operate under first, we can't. It's no use having a discussion, you know, we're all volunteers and we want to work hard and be sure we're well-prepared and in good shape to do a good job for everybody, but we also don't have, you know, 80 hours for everybody to argue before we actually look and see what we have, you know?
So if I may talk here for a second, some of the information also provided for the House of Hope were some other locations within the town limits that were provided. None of those locations, or, I know staff did spend some time gathering up information.
I, I did. And, and they're all properties that are owned by other people that need to be purchased.
Correct.
And we're not the ones purchasing, and he had already purchased this property.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to stress that there has been some work, the staff has been gone and out.
Right, yeah, Jeremy gave, gave me a stack of properties that...
Correct.
That, you know, were in locations. The only thing that I, I remember when we first started doing this was that there wasn't any location that was good for us. We would always have to do an application. And when you have someone purchasing a property, they can't file an, as my understanding, I could be wrong, they can't file an application because they're not the owner of the property. So they have to actually own the property before the application can be submitted, and there was no property in Front Royal where that wouldn't have to be done. And so, so that's kind of, it's really difficult when you're trying to do something like this and there's...
I'm not saying it's not difficult.
Right. So I mean, that's, I realize this is a more difficult location maybe than others, but everywhere there's a problem.
As to what steps you can take and...
Could you tell us the addresses of current and also the proposed...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Could you tell us the addresses of the current and also the proposed...
724 Warren Avenue is the current.
And this one is 404 West 18th Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate the thoroughness of preparation, and I really appreciate people that have things that they're waiting to say, that came and were patient and are taking this all in as part of the process. Thank you. That's really so simple, you know?
Now, basically, the, our guideline says presentation and discussion is representative of House of Hope, doesn't say anything about input from anyone else. Is that what we're wanting to do here? Do we want to hear? Is there, are there other...
Well, I would just ask that staff provide us more information on the current zoning, the surrounding properties, the zoning regulations, and what it would take, that if we were to put a rooming house in this zone, if it's even possible. I'm not even sure it's possible.
Right. If it's illegal, then we're done, you know?
But if it's spot zoning, then we'll tell you that as soon as we can. And I'm surprised that Jeremy didn't tell you that.
He told me that.
Oh, okay.
So he did tell me that, yeah, that one, he explained spot zoning to me. Of course, that's new terminology. But he also said, and so, I mean, I flat out asked him, is this like something that's possible to do? And he said, "No, it's not impossible." But that the whole, that whole side of the street would have to be rezoned.
It would require more than just one property.
Right. We'd have to do the whole, the whole side of the street.
Okay, as long as you're aware of that. But again, we don't have the information to go that far yet. Jeremy did not transport that information to us...
Right.
...before he left. So I would recommend, again, at the work session, we have something from staff on that.
Right.
And we'll let you know, if there have been a gent, I don't know, I'll have that on there when you want to, if we can handle it.
Okay. We will close that discussion, and then we have a request.
For you to leave if you...
Thank you for, thank you everyone for your attention and input.
Everyone is welcome to stay if they want to, but if I had the chance to escape...
We're going to be here a while.
Our second item is a, we discussed a request from Aaron Pike for a zoning amendment to change the building of townhouses from 20 feet to 18 feet. Mr. Pike is here. Would you like to...
So we've done some research and just kind of pulled zoning regulations from surrounding areas like Winchester and Stevens City. And what we actually found is, is the lot width is, you know, is consistent with Front Royal, but it's actually the side setback that is, is different. So in R3, the side setback is actually seven feet, and if you were to build a duplex, you could, you could build the duplex within seven feet of the property line in an R3 zone. However, if you're doing townhomes, the side setback is, the end unit has to be 20 feet away from the property line. So these other municipalities, they don't match how Front Royal deviates from that. So their side setback in R3 stays that, you know, for what a duplex is, is the same as a townhouse. So what actually, you know, we initially requested on the 80 feet, I think we'd actually be better off, you know, if we could adjust that, that lot, that side setback on townhomes just to match the same thing as a duplex, as the, the R3 setback is seven feet, but that, that end unit is 20 feet with the current, current code. So with that, you know, we've, we've got some, some properties and we're trying to, you know, buy some, some blighted properties and, and get the most value we can out of them and, and offer, you know, an affordable house. You know, the stuff we're doing is, you know, kind of high-end, but at that entry level. So we're doing granite countertops and, you know, hard, you know, hard surface floors and, and offer the town, you know, a price point that's, that's not matched right now so we can kind of attract, you know, younger, younger entry-level families and give them something, you know, quality type townhouse. So that's, that's what we've got going on and, and just looking at...
Can you show me on that where this is?
Or this particular parcel? It's, it's off of Park View.
Is this for a specific parcel, or are you looking to change the ordinance for the town?
You want to change the whole ordinance?
Yeah.
Whoa, okay.
Then that's, yep.
So, I mean, we have, currently we have a property on Park View. It's like a, an old, 100-year-old house that, it's been there for like 20 years, so we purchased that.
They currently have a BZA application in for a variance for that property, the 74th Park.
For the property itself not to change the whole rule.
Right.
So there's an application for...
For the actual property that he's...
Okay, so this is a single, or a R3 zone?
Yes, it's on R3.
That has an existing house on it that's being torn down and they're putting townhouses on it and the townhouses won't fit. Is that what you're saying? The current 20-foot?
Right now, we can get, we can get five townhouses where we're about a little under two feet short of getting a six-townhouse.
Of the ordinance, so...
Right.
So what's your hardship?
Hardship? So we bought the property under the premise that the lot was 160 feet in width, which would have given us six townhomes. After being surveyed, I don't know how it's worked out, but over time, you know, the original survey was off, but our actual frontage is 158.5. So, you know, our model was, was based on six townhomes and, and after having it re-surveyed, the, the original survey was not correct.
Okay. So, so you have a zoning or a BZA appointment to do that?
Yeah, yeah.
So...
So we're going for that.
And you still want to do this after the, if you get...
I think so, yeah.
Relief from that?
I think, I mean, to me, you know, if you can build a duplex within seven feet of the lot line, you know, I mean, maybe even if you, you shifted it down like 15 feet. Right now, 20 feet, just no other locality is, is requiring that, you know, that much.
I wouldn't say no other locality.
Well, I mean, no other, you know...
I'm sorry, that's a misspeak.
Yeah, you're probably right. But Stevens City and Winchester, you know, they're both...
Okay, so you're, basically, this is just a discussion, Mr. Chair, for a zoning ordinance amendment. Of course, there are other issues with the townhouse scenario.
Right.
For townhouse developments, it does require two parking, all-site parking spaces, and those spaces are required to be 10-foot wide, not the normal 10-foot that is normally historically associated with a, on the street parking lot because of the, the nature of...
Because that's all the parking they have. Yes.
It seemed like I remember when we went, we, we used to have no regulation and people were building 16-foot wide and you couldn't park on them. But have you discussed this with the previous planning director?
Yeah, he thought, he thought that we put it on, on the session, he thought that the town was, you know, up for helping, you know, kind of get, you know, added density on developments to the downtown area. So he, he thought this was the best route to go. We went ahead and did the BZA as well, just to, you know, didn't know, you know, what your guys' feel was on it, I don't know if it was something that we should go ahead and...
Well, you say, we're, we're here to take input from citizens as to what, and again, you know, the, the process would be if, if we were to evaluate it, you'd have to file a zoning amendment...
Right.
Or an application, not a permanent, but an application with the specific language you want to see.
Yeah.
And then, of course, we would really need to look at our ordinance because it's, it's in multiple locations.
I'd like to see copies of the full ordinance as to which you're referring.
Yeah.
If you could provide a copy for us, that would be useful.
And that's something staff can also get for us and make sure that we're... Getting originals, yeah.
So I would, again, direct staff to, that's what we're missing.
Yes.
We're already short staff, so...
Well, that's not an excuse for not doing what we're supposed to. Bottom line.
Just to clarify, are you asking that the width of the townhouse, the property width is reduced or the side setback?
The side setback.
Okay.
Okay, so, wait a minute. That's what you're, you're seeking in the BZA, not in the code?
In, in the code as well.
Okay.
And is there a limit on the number of contiguous townhouses?
Yes.
That can be built in general?
Yes.
What is that right now?
It's six.
10, I believe.
Actually...
Before you have a, you have to offset them after a certain amount.
Yeah, then it, there's, there's a certain amount before they have to be sprinkled and you have to do fire suppression systems. And that, that is six, so that's why traditionally you'll see like six units almost.
Well, you know, parking in residential areas in the, in the entry quarters and exit quarters for the town, depending which way you're going...
Yeah.
Is an issue right now.
For sure.
Because, not surprisingly, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and parking were not considered during the, the pre-comprehensive plan instruction period. And so unintended consequences of changing code are to be considered.
Right.
So before you embark on this, keep in mind, we're going to be looking very hard at health and all policies and safety in all policies, and whether it would be better to go for a variance and participate in the comprehensive planning process or go for a code change.
I think he just said that he was doing both, right? Didn't he indicate that...
Yeah, we're, we're going to try both.
For a variance and then for...
Yeah.
Right, but...
A zoning amendment?
Yeah.
So the, I, I think the 20-foot lot width, you know, is, other locales, you know, do have narrower, but I, I don't think that's bad because it does allow two 10-foot parking spots. The depth for townhouses is also, in, in this county, it's, it's 40 feet. So you're going to be 40 feet, you, you've got a 20-foot by 40-foot area in front of the townhouse, so you, I mean, you could actually have, you know, four spots. So that, that wouldn't change it. You could still, you know, there'd be room for four parking spots, the way the current code is, is written.
No, there won't, because...
Well, there's a, there's a reason for that.
Yeah.
We require a parking space to be 10-foot from a building or the unit, and then we generally have a 10-foot easement across in front of the property.
Right.
But we need to get, even cross that, but it's difficult if you dig up somebody's space like that. But, Mr. Chair, I don't have a feeling on one or the other on 18 to 20. I don't really particular, until I get more information, honestly. But until we get an application for an ordinance amendment and to see the actual ordinance, I would think that would be the next step of this.
I don't know that the conversation is going from 20 to 18. I think it's going the, the side setback to seven.
Right.
Or, is that, I think that's what you'd say.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, that's why it'd be something on paper. That says exactly what ordinance we want to change.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, as a former chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals and a member of the Planning Commission, you're wasting your time going to the BZA because they're prohibited by law to give you a variance for financial hardship, and that's basically what your thing is. So they can't give you that variance. And if they do, the council will take in the court and overturn it. I can just tell you from the many years I served on the BZA, so save your $200 and don't go that route. This is a much better plan of changing the ordinance.
It's $400 now.
A $400, but it's $200.
It's too late, too.
I'm just giving you my own, I mean, I hate to bug in, but, you know, been there, been there and done that many years, so...
That's right. You never know the superpowers of the audience.
Exactly. So, only because I was, like you say, the chairman for five years on the BZA and I, and I've seen many of these cases come, and, and it's a shame because there's a lot of, you know, I've seen them come for one foot.
Yeah.
And, and you just have to turn it down.
Yeah.
Yes.
But again, as far as what's before us here, this ordinance, until we get an application with the ordinance, I would say now we can further comment.
I think that's true.
At this time. Just my thoughts.
All right. Thank you. We will, we'll probably see that again. Okay, we have the last item is, discussion of the parking study.
We have a staff report, too.
Nothing?
Nothing.
What do we know? Like, do we have, in the past, we've had extensive discussions and the... In the past, we've had extensive discussions and the preliminary report was sent back for further information and we find.
Yeah, I don't know that.
And do we have a timeline for that?
No. I'll have to get back with you on that.
Pardon?
Have to get back with you on that.
Okay, can you provide it at our next meeting?
Sure.
Item five says updates.
That would be this. You want to run through this with us for us?
What is that?
This report?
You should be familiar with the planning and zoning report and maybe present it to us, yeah.
Well, I don't have a copy of that one.
Right.
Would it help?
This is the center one.
It's this center one, we haven't done it.
Yeah, well, we haven't, we haven't met for a while, so.
But that's normal, I presented at a meeting.
Yeah, this is at a meeting, this is a work session.
But an update would be, it's not a presentation for the record, but is there any, are there any updates on there that we should be aware of?
No.
Updates, we don't have a planning director.
Yeah, that's the only update yet, we don't have a planning director.
When you get to discussion, I'll talk about that.
Yes, okay. All right. Thank you. So, over the discussion.
Okay, let me, I've been in discussion with staff. As you know, we are shorthanded due to recent personnel adjustments. This has left us without a planner and our planning director. It is my understanding that the job description and advertisement for the planning director position is going to be eminently posted, which I thought it would be today, I didn't see it on the website today, but I know they were working on it yesterday and this morning when I was there. Staff has asked me to consider acting as a consultant for Chris until we get said director in-house. As you know, I've had, I've worked with all of you for the last ten years as staff, as a planning, as a planner, the GIS coordinator, town surveyor, and I have forty-five years' experience in the land development industry. I'm not an expert on many things, but I am well-versed in plan review and code applications and finding the correct code for what we're working on and would be able to assist them with getting information from the Planning Commission. That would be the primary concern or my primary mission would be to ensure that the Planning Commission gets the information they need. I'm not going to get into the wherewithal of the actions that have taken place. I'm interested in moving forward as to what we're going to do in the future for our community. So it is my understanding, I have a meeting tomorrow with the legal staff of the town, that I can continue in my position on the Planning Commission as well as serve in this contract basis to assist staff in gathering information. The only issue may be whether or not I should participate as a vote in particular items if I'm advising an applicant on their options. So that is what I will determine tomorrow. At the very least, I may seek a leave of absence for a three-month period until we get our new director up and running. Or I can present, there are other options I'm not entirely fit. But I do believe that in this unique situation, that I can help us best by assisting staff with getting information we need to make in our decisions. You know, again, I'm not going to dwell on what has happened in the past, I'm not going to say whether we should or should not do something based on somebody else's actions. I'm here to help this body, this staff that I've worked with for many years, maintain the high caliber of information that is provided to Planning Commission and the, what I consider the outstanding service we provide to our community.
Absolutely, and I would like to say that we are accustomed to a high level of information and a minimum of detritus so we can move forward and get things done. And I would like to recognize all former employees.
Yes.
Including Mr. Camp and Daryl.
Yep.
For excellent service and for going above and beyond and spending a tremendous amount of time answering questions, assuring the education and preparation of this body to give good advice. And I can't imagine even attempting to do this job along with another full-time job without that support. And we are short-staffed and we are in trouble, but we cannot afford to drop the ball on the party that we expect, you know?
And I really believe that we can work together and we can get through this and we can continue to provide a lot of service. All I ask is that you work through the chair.
Absolutely.
That any items you need from staff, that you work through the chair, the chair will indicate to staff what they want and then I will receive my marching orders from them if there's anything we need. There may be cases where there is nothing, but I'm afraid we have a lot of stuff coming up.
Yeah.
For review, comp plan amendments, subdivision ordinance revisions perhaps.
We have important stuff going. And I would like to say, I think at the beginning of each meeting, a disclosure of your financial relationship with the town should be made. I think that's an important part of having a fair and open process. It's interesting because it's not hard to see if your company has something here, what you should do, but where the boundaries are for a contractor for the town, I do not know. And in fact, short of disclosing, there may be none, you know?
I think there are.
Yeah, and I think legal counsel will provide you that information and I'm glad that we have that support.
But again, and please pass the word, I am not the interim planning director.
No.
I have not taken the previous, you know, Jeremy's position that is open. The interim director will be Chris.
Lucky Chris.
As far as I know, legally handling that, I'm merely here to assist them in getting the information that we need because, you know, I have so much institutional knowledge of the town.
Yeah.
Town functions, Planning Commission.
It's a piece of good luck that you're already sitting here on the Planning Commission, truthfully.
But I'd rather not get off the Planning Commission unless I had to because I really enjoy planning.
Well, and, you know, if I sell my house, I will be coming off the Planning Commission.
That's right.
And you'll have to.
Because of address.
Well, actually, that's not the problem because I could maintain an unowned residence here, but you actually have to own property here.
You have to be a freeholder and, you know, take residence.
In the town and have residence and I have both. You know, all my life I've had more than one home.
Just don't take your address on your driver's license. That's a dead giveaway.
Yeah, no, I pay my taxes and I have my business registered here and everything else, but, yeah, I mean, there are a lot of balls in the air and I'd like to say something to you.
I know.
Like, I'm sure you're standing here going, "Gah," you know, an elephant's falling on me. Do not be afraid to ask for any training or advice that you need.
I know, I'm on top of it.
You know, because that's how everybody stays safe, how you'll succeed and how you won't faint before you go home at night, you know? And all of us have learned this lesson professionally in other professions the hard way. I cannot tell you the culture of never asking for help. When I was in medical training, it was probably not good for anyone and we've changed that.
I certainly appreciate Chris and staff stepping up in this.
Yeah, yeah.
It's obviously.
Yeah, and never, I'm sorry for you, Doug, because a lot more stuff's going to have to go through you, as you know, from, as I have been going through, I've been very careful about that. Now, you know, when we were fully staffed and everyone's functions were clear, there were some questions and requests that were appropriate for an administrator to fulfill. You know, when I was educating myself on how to do this job, I had no reason to call and quiz my chairman about, you know, something in zoning practices because we had full-time professionals that did it all the time. Yeah.
So it's going to be fun, we're going to have a lot of fun.
Well, we'll have to help each other and I think we also have to listen to each other. If somebody says, "Hey, I'm not comfortable," I think we all should take, just count to ten backwards and listen, you know?
I really can just always say, "We're."
But I genuinely think, Mr. Chair, we should probably go to the next town work session and just express our concerns, just what our needs are.
Yeah.
To make sure that they're cognizant that we may have to use the planning district staff for comp plan work.
Right, I think we need to get that comprehensive plan done and I think that there's no reason not to use a planning district for that because that's what they're for. And also, it's also important to remember our position in the universe, okay? Which if you go through a bunch of the additional steps and come down to the United States, then to the state of Virginia, basically the states can make statute regarding anything not directly covered by the Constitution and the US government, but in the state of Virginia and one other state, localities below the state level actually have to have the permission of the state to.
The legislature.
That's right, we got, we're a Dillon Rule state and we are not a city in Front Royal, we are not a county. So we are actually part of the county. We are a census-designated place, but we do not have the same abilities to make regulations and to run operations that a county does.
Well, thank you for that forensic analysis of.
And it's easy to lose sight of that when we're worried about solving problems and questions. But in fact, the jobs we're allowed to do, or actually, we have not even allowed to do most of them, the jobs we're allowed to give advice on, the people who receive that advice actually are at the bottom of a very long line of other authorities. And so we are not as burdened as we feel at times because of that lack of authority.
Especially in comprehensive plan work, most of that is state mandated, state, it lays out clearly what you can and cannot do in a comprehensive plan.
And there are a lot of best practices that are at the command of planning districts under the direction of state authorities.
Absolutely.
And we have been operating without the benefit of that knowledge at times and I think it's a great time to reach upstairs and get that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?